Good evening. The purpose of Act 31, which I just sent all the board members and administrators information, is to dispel stereotypes, omissions, and inaccuracies concerning American Indians. Though not intending to promote stereotypes in McQuanigo, the very presence of the Indian mascot does provoke stereotypes of an archaic image of the Indian as if they do not exist in modern times. They are not relics of the past. They are here now, and they do not look like this. This young man is dressed up for our eighth grade football team, dressed up in face paint and mascot mohawk haircut. See a lot of this during the Friday night football games. And he comes to school like this. To promote this stereotype is to move it forward and to further advance the popularity of this type of stereotyping. I can promote stereotypes on my own as well. Let's say that I own a boutique, and in my store I sell earrings and bracelets and necklaces. And when the young girls come shopping in my store, I watch them carefully and follow them around. I am promoting a stereotype because I'm assuming that they might shoplift. And some kids do shoplift. But if I expect them to, I'm promoting a stereotype. If I go to a conference or a meeting and I see that there's a lot of people from diverse cultures there, and I hug my purse a little tighter when I see people of color, I'm promoting a stereotype because I may be assuming that they might try to steal something. If I'm a classroom teacher and a student walks in with long hair and a skateboard shirt, I might assume that he's not a good student. I'm promoting a stereotype. These are all the ways that stereotypes are promoted and advanced in our culture. And the image of the Indian with the beads and the feathers and the mohawk haircut is the same thing. It's a stereotype that has been generalized to represent a culture with an image that is not true of the culture at all. These ideas limit the culture and reduce it to a few signifying characteristics. It is the limits and boundaries that are placed on people that limit what others think of them and it also limits what they think of themselves. The mascot itself is a limiting factor that places Indian students in a world of limiting who they are and how they see themselves. These images then limit the potential of the children. Whereas European Americans are abundantly represented in all aspects of social life, Indians continue to be represented in ways that are pictured as 18th and 19th century figures. They are rarely depicted in contemporary ways such as doctors, lawyers, teachers, or businesspeople. I would like to encourage the members here tonight to read carefully the packet that I have provided on the American Indian Studies Program. It is important that our students learn the history, culture, and sovereignty of the 11 Indian nations of Wisconsin. Thank you.
Thanks, Gakoga. My name is Barbara Munson. I'm a woman of the United Nation, and I chair the Indian Mascot and Logo Task Force for Wisconsin Indian Education Association. This evening, I'm going to be reading to you a letter by Marsha Beggs Brown, who is unable to be here. Dear Members of the School Board of McQuanigo, how much I wish I could be with you this evening to share with you a firsthand testimony to the wonderful opportunities you and your district have in store. You have so many resources and people willing to help your district. And may I add one more. As the complainant in Kewanee, Wisconsin, my district chose to retire the team name "Indians" and the logo, "A Plains Indian." And by retiring both, it has made my district a much better place for us all. As your district is proud, so is mine. In 1937, my district adopted a new name, "Indians," and retired their existing name, "Hilltoppers." From 1937 until 2006, that team name was in existence. When I used Act 250 to question the name, my district was concerned. They followed the law and submitted information to the Department of Public Instruction. The day before the hearing, they decided to honorably retire the name and logo. Remarkable things happened in my district. All residents were encouraged to submit team name suggestions, which they did. Over 150 ideas were submitted to the district. A community of educators, local town members, and students winnowed the suggested names. All box holders were asked to vote. Then all students in grades pre-K through 12 voted for the remaining names. At a fall prep session with all students in attendance, the new team name was announced. The cheerleaders unfurled the banner. Local businesses had contributed a T-shirt with our district's new name, which was given to every student. It was "The Kewanee Storm." You can't imagine the excitement and support. The students were ecstatic. You have listened to all the educational research, which is truly irrefutable. You have listened to the representatives of the Great Lakes Central Tribal Council. You have listened to the good and true educators who want to help your district to be a safe place for all students. Here is your chance to help the students in McQuanigo. Here is your chance to make McQuanigo a proud and educationally sound district. Here is your chance to listen and help your district, your community, and its students. Please hear the positive history of a district much like your own which chose to retire a name which was neither educationally sound nor healthy and make your district a better place for every child. Kewanee did it, and you can too. Sincerely, Marsha Beggs Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. The next person I have is Ethan Keller.
Hi, my name is Ethan Keller. And this is Emory, so you can cross him off for this too. I did not have anything prepared to speak to the board this evening. But thanks for listening. Again, my name is Ethan Keller. I'm a former McQuanigo High School student. I graduated from McQuanigo High School. And I was present all throughout high school. The mascot, I never thought twice about the Indians mascot. I used to play in a band called Green Scene, and one of my fans was a younger girl named Stephanie Bunzel. And she married a really cool guy named Ernest Stevens II. Ernest Stevens, sorry, Ernest Stevens III. Ernest Stevens II is the head of the National Indian Gaming Association. And his grandson, Daniel Clay, just won a contest to be on 80,000 Packers tickets. Now, I belong to an organization called Eradicating Offensive Native Masketry. Because of McQuanigo's infamous reputation now as the Montgomery of the North, it has exploded the national debate about masketry. The Chief Movement started in Cleveland. There's people fighting the resurgence of the mascot in Stanford. Just a few weeks ago at the University of North Dakota, there was an incident. And the other week, there was a T-shirt made called "Super Drunk" with a beer bomb into the headdressed Indian's mouth. Now, I know everybody thinks that when we have masketry that portrays a Native American as strong and brave, all that does is say, "I want you to be what I want you to be, and you're not allowed to be anything else. I want to put you on my T-shirt for my party, and you're not allowed to be anything else." When I think about Black Hawk trying to defend his homeland of Rock Island, it was called Saukenook at the time, and he had to pay the pony for smashing the whiskey barrels with his tomahawk. I do not see any honor in tomahawks and peace pipes and feathered headdress regalia for sport. It's not honorable. Every feather in a headdress is meant as a gift to signify respect from a leader in the community for a deed they've done or a brave thing. So for somebody to don headdresses for sport is not only desecration, but it's blood money. Thank you.
Can I go and try to pronounce last name? James?
Fortune. Wheel Fortune. Like I said, my name is James Fortune. I am a former student of Prescott High School in Prescott, Wisconsin. I believe most of you know Jeff Ryan. I know he testified at your DPI hearing about Act 31 and how to implement Act 31 and whether or not you guys were following proper guidelines. As it was ruled, you guys weren't from the DPI and still aren't, and that's why we're here today. I am a student from a school that implemented this without any problems, and it's unbelievably successful. We've had, Jeff started going up to Lough to Flambeau Indian Reservation in the eighties during the spearfishing rights campaign up there. You know, "Kill an Indian, Save a Walleye." Calling, you know, Native Americans on the shorelines "timber neggers" and "spear an Indian, Save a Walleye." You know, all this racist and profanity. We got to see these videos firsthand in this class because that's what Act 31 says you have to do, is teach about this stuff. Contemporary, not the history, not his story of Native Americans, the glorified Hollywood Indian, as we would say. How, you know? That's what we learned in school. We didn't learn the things that we needed to learn until I got to high school. And I saw this class, and it was eye-opening. So we had a chance to go up to Lough to Flambeau as students. Four students, four boys, four girls had to write an essay and were able to go on a four-day trip to Lough to Flambeau and get immersed in the culture and figure out why, from a Native point of view, why the mascot and imagery is so disrespectful and degrading to them as a community and as a whole. We've had over 250 Prescott students go up to Lough to Flambeau. We call them the Waswoganing alumni. I've been there every summer since 2004. I've missed my sister's wedding to make this trip. It's that important to me. The things you learn in Jeff's class, and like I know he's said before that he can provide material and implement this curriculum with zero to little cost. And it's an unbelievable person, resource for you guys to have and to help implement this curriculum. I came from a school, we have 250 white students that have gone up to the reservation and know what it's like to be immersed in a culture. And many of these students have gone on to do other type of work with other African countries or, you know, other races in trying to promote, you know, just a general well-being of everyone getting along and loving each other. And, you know, you guys need to work on this and get this implemented because it's not hard and it's very, very, I don't know. It's just, it's good to have. I mean, a community needs it, and you learn a lot from it. And it's just, you know, he's a great resource for you guys to check into, so thank you.
Sherri Jones?
Hi. I wanted to mention that within many Native American communities within the U.S., suicide rate is very high.
Sixty percent.
I know that in the past, I haven't checked lately. I know in the past, it used to be that Canada was the highest suicide rate of the tribes there, and the second to the highest was South Dakota. And the reason being, as I said, the young people, a lot of the teens, don't see themselves having a future. And most of it has to do with discrimination and racism. And a lot of young people don't want to leave the reservations to go to public schools because of things that have happened in the past and the stereotyping and fear. They don't want to go to colleges. So work on encouragement. And I think that, you know, when people see things like the logos and the mascots and stuff like that, a lot of Native people, they don't, they don't know what people are trying to do by using these things because they think it's very strange. It's odd because it's not any part of any of their cultures. As I just heard somebody saying, like, the feathers. Feathers are spiritual thing. They're holy, they mean a lot. And they're given as gifts for awards or good deeds, bravery, and whatnot. And so when people use them in a way that has nothing to do with their cultural things, then, you know, then it just, they find it strange. And another thing I wanted to mention is that there is a group in Madison through the Y, so the Women's Y Downtown. It's a women's racial justice groups, anti-racism, and things like that. They have workshops that they teach, many different ones. And I know they've had plenty of teachers that have come through there. And I used to be part of their group, but I haven't been with them in a few years. But I know that when these teachers were going to their group sessions, their workshops to learn, many of them had a different perspective when they left. They were crying. They said, "Oh, my gosh, we've never really realized that we were discriminating against people. We never realized what damage that we could have been doing without knowing." And so basically, I'm thinking that, you know, all children and young adults, when they go into school, they need to feel safe in their environment. And if they feel that where they're at, people are discriminating against them, it makes it harder for them to push forward onto the next year of school and onto college or whatever to graduate. So I hope that you have some kind of program here for the teachers to those workshops like what they have in Madison. I think I saw Rachel Beington here. I know she has been active with them. Maybe she'll have some more info, you know, if you have the ear. But I don't know what you guys have here in your school for that type of stuff. But I would suggest that it's a good idea to maybe contact one of those groups in Madison because the workshops are really good and it would probably give people a good understanding as to where people are coming from when they're trying to teach unlearning racism. I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you.
The next person we have is Paula Molya.
Hello. Yeah, every time I come here, it rains. I'm kind of hoping that goes away after a certain point in time. Last week, I'm sure you all read the news about what happened at the University of North Dakota. They had a sorority that decided to have a party on campus, and they printed some pretty inappropriate T-shirts. They said "Super Drunk" on the front of their shirt, spelled S-I-O-U-X with a hyphen and then a P. And then they took plenty of pictures of themselves while they were, you know, chugging large amounts of alcohol. At the same time, we've all known about the LA Clippers and the huge controversy behind Donald Sterling not willing to sell a team in which LeBron James is saying he's not going to play next year if he doesn't sell that team based upon the inherent racism. And we see more and more pressure from the Washington Redskins to change their name. We see newspapers that won't print "Washington Redskins" because they say it's a pejorative term. So we're living in a kind of a politically charged time in which we're taking, we're looking at things that we used to take for granted, and we're kind of reexamining them in light of what we know in the 21st century. So coming from that, and certainly McQuanigo is nowhere near any of that. I don't see any T-shirts on you guys that would be inappropriate. And I certainly don't see anyone having kind of clandestine conversations with someone in which they're deriding the race of people that work for them. But it does mean that all of us, where we are in our communities, need to begin to have kind of a conversation about how we can transition away from names that, again, when they were chosen, certainly didn't intend any kind of pejorative meaning, but now have taken on that meaning as we transition into a more diverse world. I've looked at your website, and you have a lot to be proud of in terms of the awards that you're receiving. I saw the grant that you received, one of the National Carol White FIAID grants, which I think there are about six or seven schools in Wisconsin, but most states only have one, and that's incredibly impressive. I also saw a section in which you won an award because you're increasing the number of people that take advanced placement courses, but you're not lowering the standards within those classes. And that seemed to be the metaphor for what I think McQuanigo School District can really be, which was increasing opportunity but improving performance. So I look at that, and I look at the fact that the school district is increasing their computer technology. You're teaching things you've never taught before because there's a need for it. I certainly teach differently than I've taught before because we know more in terms of learning things. And we know that in terms of cultural competence, we need to understand more about diverse worlds. So what I'm going to ask all of you to do is to begin the conversation, to begin to rethink your mascot and possibly transition into something that benefits your values as a school district. We've got a couple of resources here which really will help you do that. First of all, you have very bright students, and that's clear by looking at the standards that come out about your students. Secondly, you have very committed school board members, and I want to single out Mr. Redell because during all the hearings and during all the votes, this man drove to Madison and stayed there till midnight at night listening to every bit of conversation about the mascot. And that is really impressive. McQuanigo isn't that far away from Madison, but that's a trek late at night. You've got a group of people that really care. And this is my third, fourth school district meeting. I can see how much you all care, and that's a real resource. The other thing you have are you have resources that are now available to you. You've heard Andy talk about the different ways that different teachers across the state have implemented Act 31, and they can share that. We've got the Summer Institute. We've got the Wisconsin Indian Education Association, and there's plenty there. Thank you so much.
All right. The next person I have is Rachel Beington.
Hello there. My name is Rachel Beington. I'm a member of the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma. My tribe is from Oklahoma, but I was born and raised in Madison. Thanks for allowing me to speak to you this evening. I'd like to begin with a story of how the use of Indian mascots offense my boys. I have two boys, ages 15 and 11. They wrestle and they participate in tournaments. Even though our schools in Madison do not use Indian mascots, they are subjected to seeing the stereotypical and iconic representations from other schools. It's hard for them, and they don't like it. They know that the tribes of Wisconsin have asked all of the schools to end the use of Indian mascots, and they know schools have refused this request. During the wrestling season, there was a match in Milwaukee. As usual, the bleachers were filled with the families of the participants. My husband and I found a spot to sit down. And it was during the break that we found out that we were sitting where all of the McQuanigo Indians were sitting. It was quite uncomfortable to be sitting there as both my husband and I are American Indians. And yet, all of the students had "Indians" written across their jackets. Think about this for a minute. Can you imagine had it been the other way around? What if a school called their team "The Crackers"? And a couple of white parents found themselves sitting amongst a group of Crackers teammates? It would probably be quite uncomfortable, as it was for us. During the break, my boys came up to sit with us, and they noticed the students with their McQuanigo Indians gear on. As you may imagine, it was upsetting to them. As parents, we would never allow our sons to do anything to show such disrespect. Asking your school to change the name is about respect. And I can tell you, we did not or do not feel respected by such team names as yours. We didn't say anything to the wrestlers. They were oblivious to who we might be. I do not know if any of them even thought that we might be Native Americans. My husband was beating, and a man sitting there asked what he was doing. My husband explained his activity, and the next thing you know, they were talking about feathers, hunting, birds, and such. This is what your students should be learning about, about the rich cultures of Native tribes, not about name appropriation. I would like to leave you with a literature scan I've done with art journal articles. I just want to mention that I cannot find any research, scholarly research, that says that it's okay to use Indian mascots. But there's tons of research saying that they should be discontinued. So if you would like one, I'll just leave them over here. They can be passed around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Derek Beck.
My name is Derek Beck. I am a former student of McQuanigo. I graduated in 2011. To appropriately detail the long history of human and civil rights violations suffered by American Indians at the hand of European settlers and later the United States government would take a lifetime, I have but three minutes. Today, I'm going to focus on one issue, and that is the issue of the insensitivity of a federal, well, not a federal, but a public school using an American Indian mascot. In 1879, that lasted well into the 20th century, a military officer, Richard Henry Pratt, created the first Indian boarding school in Pennsylvania, and hundreds of other schools suddenly appeared afterwards. Pratt had this to say in 1892. "A great general has said that the only good Indian is a dead one. In a sense, I agree with this sentiment, but only in this: that all the Indian there is in the race should be dead. Kill the Indian in him and save the man." These schools had one purpose and one purpose only. It was to ethnically cleanse the United States of any Native culture. These Native children were often forced into these schools, taken from their families. They were forced to cut their hair, forced to be photographed. They were forced to practice Christianity and forbidden from practicing other religion and cultural practices. And if they failed to do so, they were often beaten. Sexual and physical abuse was rampant among the student body. Malnourishment was rampant around these children. They faced many diseases that killed numerous children, including tuberculosis. They were forced to speak English and could not learn their own languages. This is a snippet from NPR that I read earlier today. In 1945, Bill Wright, a Haban Indian, was sent to the Stewart Indian School in Nevada. He was just six years old. Wright remembers matrons bathing him in kerosene and shaving his head. This was 1945. I ask you, what on this district claim that a mascot instituted in, what, 1920, 1930 about? When we were still stealing children from their native parents and sending them to schools where they were bathed in kerosene and forced against their own will to practice a religion, a language, and dress in a way they hadn't before? Why would the district want to honor set people at the time when they were sending them off to be abused? It's disgusting. And not only is the image that McQuanigo uses, does it support this attitude that natives are inferior to other people, it ignores this history, this huge violation of rights that occurred in our history as a country. And it's quite simply terrible that the school district continues to not only exploit this, but exploit it for significant profit. I ask you to do the right thing and the responsible thing and end the use of this mascot. The Native people are not your mascot.